To this July 10th meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. We have one meeting this month in addition to one special meeting, but this is pretty much it for July, so I'm glad to have you all here. Dr. Cash, would you begin by leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. Ready? Begin.
(speaking Spanish) Thank you.
We also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. If anyone needs one, please let us know. We'll now move on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, President Deacon. It's with great pleasure that tonight I introduce John Dent, Dos Publos High School's star teacher, somebody that does a great job each and every year with students in all of his classes. And he's here with some students to present information about DP News, about the Yearbook, and about journalism at Dos Publos High School. John?
Thank you, Dave. And thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come in here and speak to you. As Dave mentioned, I'm a teacher at Dos Publos High School. Under the tutelage of Dave when he was there, and along with my partner, Daniel Kabitis, I started a program eight years ago called DP News. It's become a daily news show that tries to provide our campus with up-to-date information about what's happening in and around the campus, and even off-campus sometimes. And it's been a production that has grown tremendously over the past eight years into a spot where we have so many different students involved. We have a variety of ethnicities and backgrounds. This year, there was a 55-45 percent ratio of boys to girls in the program. And three of the girls in my program were finalists in the NICWIT Women in Technology National Competition. One of these finalists was Lena Kleinschmidt. She's a four-year participant in the DP News program and a testament to what-
A good student.
Hi, so I'm Lena Kleinschmidt, as Mr. Dent said. And I started my freshman year, just like any freshman, scared, no idea what I wanted to do in my future. And I had a choice to take either DP News or Yearbook, which is kind of ironic because Dent teaches both. But I chose to do DP News because I was interested in sports and maybe, you know, I could anchor or learn more about the sports program. And I was lucky enough as a freshman to be able to anchor in front of the entire school and be one of the only freshmen in the class. And, I mean, the courage and everything you've learned from that to be such a small person, such a giant school, and have everyone see you every single day. I went up in the ranks my sophomore year as sports editor. Junior year, I was one of the leadership commissioners where I made sure that the leadership program and DP News worked together. Same thing with my senior year, where I was one of the main producers and one of the leadership commissioners. And honestly, never would I thought that someone who was so sports-driven, so interested in physical therapy and things like that, would ever have any interest in video production. But we go to a convention every year called Student Television Network, or STN, and it's the best week of my life. You, along with 2,000 other kids, go to this one-week program where you have contests that you do, sessions that you go to. And I was lucky enough, this year, I got second place in the contest that I entered. So on a national level, it was a great, great honor to get that. And it's just the passion that you gain from that week and being with people, I mean, at your school, there's people who have the same passions as you, but in such a concrete week, you learn so much about each other, and it's so fantastic. And so now that I'm leaving DP, I'm graduated, and I'm not going to study video production, but I know that for the rest of my life, it'll be part of me, and especially learning so much about myself and learning the courage that I have for especially to speak in front of you guys. As a freshman, never would I have done that. But now, I've been on TV, I've been interviewed, I've been everything like that, and I'm able to do this without being scared. And so Paige Puggetti is the person who's taking over for me as a senior, and she's going to be the leadership commissioner. So Paige?
Hi, I'm Paige Puggetti. I'm taking over as co-producer in a leadership position for DP News. Last year in my junior year, I was sitting in Latin class, and I was sitting next to my best friend Erin, and we were just kind of talking about what class we were going to take, and I had watched DP News every day. And I knew that, like, I wanted to be on TV, and I wanted to be one of those girls everybody on campus knew about, so I signed up for the class. And little did I know that I had a fear of speaking in front of cameras. And as the year went, and with Lena's and Dent's help, I got comfortable in front of people, in front of the camera, and it's just like, it's gotten me out of my nutshell. I'm not shy anymore. I speak a lot. I've gotten leadership characteristics, and it's just like helped so much in everyday Along with the class, we not only make a daily show, but we also entered contests, like, every month. We did the Live the Eight, which encourages healthy living and healthy eating and exercising. And we did an SB water contest where you promote to conserve water. And we entered about three videos out of 75, and we came out with the grand prize, and we won some money and recognition. So we not only learn how to, like, be an anchor and speak and all that stuff, we also learn, like, Adobe, Premiere, and Photoshop, and we learn computer skills and how to make videos, and how to promote and do public service announcements. And we get so much more out of it than anybody would ever think. And another cool thing with DP News is it's also broadcasted on the SB channel. So it's a great thing to see, and parents get to see their kids on TV, and it's just like the best feeling ever. So, yeah. Mr. Dent?
You may notice a change in outfit throughout this presentation. That's the next thing. That's because instead of wearing a lot of hats, I wear a lot of different shirts in this system. And DP News is part of what I do on the campus, and I'm not going to talk to you about my leadership and my other things that I'm involved in, but I am going to talk about, first of all, another program on our campus. And this program is the Charger Account. And although I'm not involved with it- If you want to advance the next slide. The chargeraccount.org went 100% online this year, and I actually came and spoke before the board last year in relation to some new board policies on journalism. And I appreciate the hard work that you did to make those policies in place. Bill Woodard took over this program. It was fledgling, it was struggling a little bit, and it was under the care of a variety of substitute teachers and other people. And Bill Woodard said, "We're going to move this into the 21st century, and we're going to move this forward and get us online." And so he moved us into a wonderful partnership with News Hawk and Bill McFadden, one that I got to see because the lab that I work in with DP News and Yearbook is also the room where they produce the Charger Account. And in that lab, every week, News Hawk sent mentors, or Bill himself would come, Bill McFadden himself would come and speak to the students and deal with the situations, help them understand how they should deal with certain situations. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful partnership. And unfortunately, well fortunately and unfortunately, Bill is moving on, as you know, and we have Mike Gurken who's going to be taking over his position. Bill is moving into an assistant principal position, and Mike Gurken will be taking over in his stead. The students for that program did want to be here this evening, but as these students can attest to, it's a busy time for all of them. They've got lots of things going on, and I appreciate the fact that they got to be here. Next slide. The other program that I'm actively, oh, sorry, one more, actively involved in is the Yearbook. Stacy Johnson, who's passing you out a copy of this year's Yearbook, is the business manager for this year, for this upcoming year, and she's giving you a copy of our 360-page, 46th edition of The Image, which is the name of our Yearbook. The thing that strikes most people when they open the book is the amazing photography and the amount of copy, the amount of writing in the book. Former principal Mark Swanetts came from a school with a nationally recognized program, and when I took over the book, he came to me and said, "Well, I'd like you to put more writing in the book." I have a BA in mathematics, I have a business degree, I have background in computers and technology, and he asked me to put more writing in the book. It has been a little bit of a long road, but I feel that this is a true record of the year for our students and for our community. And that though the students won't spend the time reading it today, tomorrow, next week, or next month, in 10 years, they will be able to look back at this account and really know what was happening, get a feel for what was happening. And the Yearbook, that's my goal for our Yearbook. But a Yearbook takes so much work. A Yearbook of this caliber takes so much work. I have a staff of 34 students, 32 of which were female, and they worked very hard to get this book. I'm going to have Stacy come and talk to you for a moment about some of the things that she went through with this book.
Hello, I'm Stacy Johnson, and this year I will be a co-business manager. And so pretty much that job entails the baby ads that are in the back of the book. It's the seniors who, their parents buy them a little section of a page, and they get to have their little face, like, shown in, like, a little special part. All the parents just love that. So that'll be my job, along with my other partner, Mari. So, but I started off as just wanting to be in staff, and I was just like, you know, I feel like this would be like a fun class to join in, and my friends were in it, and I was like, "Yeah, this seems cool." And then I went on my first JA, which stands for Journalism Education Association, and that was in Kansas City, Missouri. But it was so much fun along with Lena. It was like a life-changing experience, and that made me realize that I loved Yearbook more than I ever thought I possibly could. And so then I continued on the next year. In this past year, I was the people editor. So that's like the mugshot pictures and everything like that. And that was really fun. That was with one of my best friends, Jessica. But now I get to go on to be the business manager, and I feel like that's going to be teaching me a lot, which I want to further in in college. It's going to teach me about business and more management, like handling money, and kind of getting to know that kind of side of the world. When I went to another Journalism Education Association conference this past year in Seattle, and I went to a tour around King Five Television, and there was something about it that really, like, changed it, and I really loved the way it looked, and it just kind of opened my eyes to a different world, because also being in partnership with DP News, like, it's just amazing, like, to see them working too, and we all work so hard together. But that tour wanted me to go into business and really get my hand in that and everything, so it seems really cool. And this experience has been so amazing. And this class isn't, like, also just like a really, like, serious, kind of like, it's a fun class where we get to, like, enjoy each other's company, we become one big family, and that's just, like, better than, like, anybody could ever imagine. And thank you, Mr. Dent, for that.
This book is 100% student-created, designed, and produced. But even more than that, the students must sell, market, advertise, and manage an $140,000 account. This past year, the book earned me an invitation to speak at a National Journalism Convention in Columbia University. The book continues to improve in national rankings, earning a gold medal from Columbia, putting it in the top 10% in the country, and a first class from the National Scholastic Press Association. There's a line to get in the class, and students go through an application and interview process, but the real deciding factor is the time and effort that students are willing to put in during the spring, summer, and throughout the year. My students have won a large number of design, photography, and writing individual awards, and last year's book was chosen out of 7,000 that Jostens produced to be recognized in the cover-to-cover section of their award book. I'm confident that the book before you is our best ever, and I'm hopeful that it moves us into the elite books of the country. Please take the time to enjoy your books, and when you're done, either bring it back to the district, or, and we will sell it to a student or provide it to an advertiser, and thank you for their support. The last thing that I'd like to do is, our studio, we built with help from a grant brought in by Cynthia White several years ago, three years ago, and the Yearbook program partnered to build a new studio. That studio has then moved forward even further with ROP's help. ROP funds the DP News program, and we're going to be putting in a sound wall to separate out the existing studio and the computers, but they'll still be able to see. It'll be glass, like in a real news studio. And that's happening right now as we speak. Those two programs do work very closely together, and we hope to continue to work that way. The last thing I want to show you is a commercial that was made by two of my students. It was created for Jostens in a two-week time period, and Jostens asked us to just send them a short video. Since they knew that I was involved in both video and Yearbook, they said, "Send us a short video about what your students do, how they make their Yearbook so great." And my students created it. It was then turned around, and Jostens purchased it from the students, and they created this video that was then used as a national marketing campaign for Jostens. This was created by two DP News students, Michael Lee and Brian Lovelace.
The Yearbook is important to all of us, as current students and-
Sorry.
The Yearbook brings our stories to life.
I'm an athlete.
I'm a musician.
I'm a artist.
I'm a photographer.
I'm a whiskey.
I'm a leader.
I'm a class fella.
I'm a cheerleader.
I'm in the Yearbook. This is our school and our story.
We remember the good times.
Like, I'm out here.
Like, lunchtime activities.
The pictures really captured the moment, and I feel like I'm still there.
Our books came out just like present.
I can't wait for my friend to sign my Yearbook.
This book has great photos that I don't have.
The Yearbook is important to all of us, as current students and alumni.
The Yearbook is bought from members from the ally.
Who are we?
We are the Yearbook!
Our stories, our space and time. Share with your friends and look back forever. Get your hands on this year's Yearbook.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time, and really appreciate- Oh, one last thing.
Yeah, one more t-shirt.
One more shirt. Yerd, Yearbook nerd. Very proud of it.
Well, before you pack up, I think we all just want to thank you so much for coming, especially in the summer, but it's been terrific to hear about all the wonderful things you're doing, both from an instructional level and from the student level. I have a special place in my heart for student journalism because I was a journalism advisor for about 20 years in the community college system, and I know what those conferences mean and how fun they are. We often approve those field trips, but we don't always get to hear back from the students about what that meant to them, so that was really great. But the things you're doing, the convergence of all the media is so timely, and I know that all of our high schools have really forward-moving, thinking journalism programs, and it's such an important part of the student experience, so thank you so much. And by the way, this will be televised this Saturday at 5:00 on Channel 18 if you want to get another look on your online performances, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Let me also-
I'd just like, the news, you know, the online communication, I signed up and I receive it. I learn more about the school than any other school in the district, and I really enjoy it. I mean, I really like knowing what's going on, and that's a firsthand opportunity to do it. To me, it's much better than getting a paper once a month, but to get it daily at, I don't know, 4:15 in the morning is wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. And Susan, let me say to your comment about approving and not seeing, all of my students that go to the conferences do video journals, and those are actually posted on our website. So if you want to see and hear about what the experience was like, they create wonderful video journals that are anywhere from three minutes to 15 minutes, that give you a real good grasp of what happens at these conferences and what they benefit from.
Yeah, I know, so much learning goes on, and a lot of fun, too.
Yes.
Thanks again for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, it's interesting, I hired John as a math teacher, and you can tell by his use of the word "about" that he is a North American, but he's not from the United States.
I'm in the process of becoming an American student.
All right, good man. It's really incredible what is happening, and I'm glad that you mentioned all three high schools have such a vibrant media program for kids, and it's really great opportunities for them. And I thought it would be appropriate to kind of officially kick off our summer with kids in front of you all tonight. So a couple of other great things to talk about. I'm pretty confident we're all going to be watching the London Olympics, and we should be watching very carefully for three important people. Kami Craig from Santa Barbara High School will be on the women's water polo team. Todd Rogers from San Marcos High School will be playing beach volleyball. And Terry Schrader, who has been three times an Olympian, will be coaching the water polo team for the men as well. I want to announce, you all are aware, but remind everyone that summer school classes at Dos Publos have been canceled tomorrow because it's the only day that we're going to be able to bring helicopters on campus to move those HVAC systems. The scheduled weekends all got, those helicopters were diverted, rightfully so, to help combat the fires in Colorado. We're hopeful that tomorrow is the day that we can actually get that accomplished so that we can move forward with that project. And really want to thank Dave Hetjunk and his facilities team for demonstrating an incredible amount of patience as we've gone through this process. Also want to remind everyone that we have a cosponsored presentation on head injuries in sports that's going to take place at 6:30 on Monday, August 6th, with Cottage Hospital and the Brain Injury Support Center. We are encouraging coaches, parents, student athletes, and all of our secondary schools, they've been invited to the presentation. It's going to address the new legislation in California. There are copies of that invitation for you, and there's also some at the back of the room as well. Very briefly, I want to also acknowledge the hard work that's happening by our district office. I think 20 years ago, when I started as a school administrator, the summer was a very different experience than it is currently. It really is a time in which we are working in the district office probably some of the longest hours, some of the hardest work is being done in the months of July and August. And examples of that are preparing for all the professional learning activities that will occur for staff. And some of that for our leadership team include our first principal leadership team meeting for the school year. We're going to have a restorative justice training at Santa Barbara Junior High School for two straight days where we have brought the facilitators from Denver Public Schools to be on hand to help us and help Santa Barbara Junior High School with their implementation. We're really going to be spending a lot of time on evaluation this next year, not that we haven't in the past, but we're really going to focus on it. We're going to have two straight days of evaluation training for administrators. The first day will be actually on evaluation for administrators, what those tools will look like, how we'll work with our principals and our assistant principals. And the next day will be all about teacher evaluations. And it's very exciting because that second day, we're actually going to be working with districts, our surrounding districts, with Carpinteria, with Hope, with Galleta, with Cold Springs, with Montecito, bringing together all of the site leaders from those districts to work on what's a really important issue, and that's ensuring that we have great teachers working in our classroom. And then our summer will conclude with our leadership charge, which we will bring all of our leadership team together for two days. We'll finalize our planning for the school year and get ready for that first day of school, which is Monday, August 27th, for our traditional schools. But something very exciting is going to be happening on Monday, and that is our two year-round schools will begin. Santa Barbara Community Academy and Cleveland Elementary School will both be starting on Monday, July 16th. So their school year, as a result of the year-round calendar, begins about six weeks prior to the rest of our schools. On November 6th, the voters are going to have an opportunity to invest in high-quality local education, and we'll have parcel tax measures A and B on the ballot. And those parcel taxes will reflect the resolution that the board passed unanimously at the last board meeting. At our secondary level, an annual investment of $45 per parcel for measure A will help students in grades seven through 12 in the areas of math, science, and technology education, music arts, theater programs, foreign language, and very much importantly, augmenting our career readiness classes, our continuing technical education, career technical education, and vocational education. At the elementary school level, the annual investment will be at $48 for measure B, and we'll be looking at math, science, technology, education, helping maintain some class sizes, continuing the incredible music program that we have in our elementary schools. It's something that we should be very proud of as a community, and for both measures, attracting and retaining the best teachers that we can possibly get. So with that, I conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, and that moves us on to board comments and correspondence. And I think I would just like to start by welcoming some of our new folks. You can see we have a few new faces up here on the dais, although they've already been hard at work, I know. We've got Dr. Ben Drouy, who's our assistant superintendent for secondary education, and Emilio Handel, who is our assistant superintendent for elementary education. And we're glad to have you here. It's great to have you up on the dais. And I'd also like to mention Margaret Christensen is also here with us, our assistant superintendent for human resources, along with the rest of our wonderful crew over there, some of who are now sitting somewhere else, at least temporarily. But thank you again for joining us because we're really looking forward to working together as a district, and it's really a pleasure to have you here. Board members, would you like to report on any activities or any action that's occurred? No? Okay. Well, then we will move on to announcement of our closed session action. We have nothing to report coming out of closed session this evening. And public comment, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
We do not? Okay. We are also using our novice agenda this evening, and you can see that we, I think, have made a pretty good effective transition away from a lot of paper, which is nice to have done. So we will move on to the consent agenda, and are there any items that board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Doesn't look like it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No motion passes, 5-0. And that moves us on to our action agenda. The first item is the approval of memorandum of understanding between the Santa Barbara Unified School District, Just Communities Central Coast, and United Parents Padres Unidos for implementation of a language access project for back-to-school night events. Dr. Cash, are you going to take this one?
Yeah, I am. As board members are aware, we will have, we had a pilot program this past year with Dos Publos High School students and, in particular, families and students at Perro Elementary School. As a result of, I think, a really good conversation with our site administrators and with Padres Unidos, we've come to an agreement that we're going to be offering the same program at all of our schools throughout the district, and we're very excited about that. It's a wonderful opportunity where both kids get the opportunity to learn and parents get the opportunity to learn more about what's happening in their schools in the language, their primary language. So this is the agreement that formalizes that, and we're looking forward to scaling it up and seeing how well it goes out this next year.
I think it's a really exciting program and innovation. Board members, are there any questions you have about this or comments? Ms. LeMone?
Well, I'm really excited to see it. I actually think that it was a great pilot program last year, and I'm excited to see it expand. I do have a couple of questions. So on page two of six, there's two things that are mentioned. One is an evaluation plan, and the second thing is a transportation plan. And so I was just curious if we had any thoughts on what the evaluation plan was going to cover, if that was going to include parent feedback the night of?
It will include both parent feedback, the student-participant feedbacks, and feedback from-
Dr. Cash, are you going to take this one?
I am. As board members are aware, we will have, we had a pilot program this past year with Dos Pueblos High School students and in particular, families and students at Perro Elementary School. As a result of, I think, a really good conversation with our site administrators and with Padres Unidos, we've come to an agreement that we're going to be offering the same program at all of our schools throughout the district and we're very excited about that. It's a wonderful opportunity where both kids get the opportunity to learn and parents get the opportunity to learn more about what's happening in their schools in the language, their primary language. So, this is the agreement that formalizes that and we're looking forward to scaling it up and seeing how well it goes out this next year.
I think it's a really exciting program and innovation. Board members, are there any questions you have about this or comments? Ms. Lamone?
Well, I'm really excited to see it. I actually think that it was a great pilot program last year and I'm excited to see it expand. I do have a couple of questions. So on page two of six, there's two things that are mentioned. One is an evaluation plan and the second thing is a transportation plan. And so I was just curious if we had any thoughts on what the evaluation plan was going to cover? If that was going to include parent feedback the night of?
It will include both parent feedback, the student participant feedbacks and feedback from the site administrators.
Great. And the second thing was related to the transportation plan. Who covers the cost?
Of transporting the students? I think the individual students are going to be covering the cost.
Okay, alright.
I know that Easy Lift last year provided transportation for them. I suspect to all the schools that might be challenging.
Yeah, I don't think Easy Lift can do all of this, that's why I didn't say that. I think they'll do some of it, but not all of it, but...
Okay.
I had a question about recruiting the students and I'm not sure how that works. I know they, I think they were avid students from Dos Pueblos last year. But, my hope would be that we would actively recruit maybe from some of our AP Spanish classes as well because part of the discussion that surrounded this with Just Communities involved, talking about even an interpretation pathway as a career technical pathway, something to think about down the line. But this would be a great way for students to get experience interpreting and understand what that might, what the implications of that might be for future job opportunities. So, poco a poco as we say, but I think it's a great beginning.
Certainly will let the high schools know.
And so great for the parents to have these interpreters in the classroom and for the teachers as well. Any other comments on this one? Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passes. We look forward to hearing about that and maybe we can even see some of it in action ourselves when they go out at back-to-school night.
Yeah, hopefully, yes.
Okay, our next agenda item is the approval of Program of Choice Annual Evaluation Reports.
Well, it's the first time this is before you. So it's an opportunity for you to see, in a shorthand way, it's really not, you know, it's not a comprehensive report, but clearly I think it addresses the issues that you requested and, you know, without going through each individual one, which I'm not going to do. They seem that each program answered the questions to the, as they were relevant to their particular program of choice and there clearly is learning for all of us to do based upon the evaluation and questions, prompting questions to be addressed for all the programs during the next year. In particular, in relationship to their, the composition of the students enrolled in those programs. So, you know, some of the schools clearly have some great ways in which they're recruiting all students to participate and others have opportunities to improve. And I do believe that because of, and we haven't brought this forward, but you'll hear about it sometime either in August or September, the way in which we're going to introduce these programs of choice to our junior high school students, that kind of inter, I don't want to use the word academy, but I'll use that in a kind of Xerox sort of way. Inter-academy communication amongst those groups from Dos Pueblos to San Marcos to Santa Barbara High School, how they work with students, how they recruit students for those programs, I think will be really important. Because right now they're basically working in silos.
I'm glad you mentioned that because that was the thing that really came to mind as I read these about isolated, really great experiences, but how can they be sharing those and working together and collaborating and talking about sponsors and fundraising and all those things that they do and how they can join. I was really glad to see that the representation of young women in these programs. You know, there's actually more women, I think, than, or girls than boys in almost all of the academies. And that might not be a surprise, but the Engineering Academy, I think, has, you know, has really made some great strides in terms of finding that and as they move towards more diversity in terms of ethnicity, I think we've seen progress and we've really, we asked for this, we asked for them to lay out plans for us about how they would achieve that and they've clearly taken that seriously and are working hard at it and I'm glad to see there's some progress, more to be made. I know, but it's heartening to see how hard they're working at it. Mrs. Parker?
Yes, I'm glad that you brought up the piece about demographics. That continues to be a big issue for some of our alternative programs. And there is progress, but it's very, very incremental and it's disappointing and I don't want to just get this and rubber stamp this and have people think, oh, well, that's okay, as long as I put in a report that this is happening, that's enough. I do expect to see more change and quicker change in terms of outreach to students and students choosing these programs. And even things like when I looked at, when I was looking at one of the programs, it really listed some of their team-building activities and it's so one-sided in terms of culture, in terms of... That I was looking at it going, wow, you know, no wonder if you have students that are used to a different culture, they're not going to want to participate in this because it's not going to feel like home, it's not going to feel like community to them. And so I feel like there's a lot of education to do in terms of leadership in those programs, in terms of what really would welcome students of every background and not just one kind of...
Ms. Lamone?
And, well, I first like to say that I think these are great programs. And because they are great programs, I would definitely like to see more students reflective of the school community participating in these programs. And I definitely echo Ms. Parker's comments related to inclusiveness and just thinking about ways that we can increase participation from students. I know I've had the opportunity to work with some of the counselors, some of the teachers involved in these programs and I know that they're working very hard in their spare time, on the weekends, on the evenings, really trying to make these quality programs. Without going into any individual program, there's a few things that stuck out to me that I think, because this was the first time we did it, that I'd like to see in the future. I think the demographic data was useful, but I would like to see it broken down by subgroup for three years. I think what we got was either a couple sentences about the makeup or actually there was a program that broke it down the last three years and they broke down ethnic subgroups, which I think is important to see. The other thing that I'd like to see that's not in here is income. I'd like to see what percentage of the students participating are low-income.
Are on free and reduced lunch?
Free and reduced lunch. And I'd like to see that for all of them. And I actually, I mean, and I want to make sure that the programs know that this was our first trial. We all made suggestions, but as we're looking at this, I think there's other information that's very useful. The other thing that I will actually leave to your discretion, Dr. Cash, if, whether it's appropriate or not, but I'd like to see the cost per student. What does a program like this cost? I mean, there's some amazing activities involved, but I will leave that to your discretion of whether we can collect that data, whether we can report it in a fashion that makes sense. So, I will leave you to think about, there's no need for an answer now. And the other thing, I think in the area of funding sources, some of these programs have foundation and others don't have foundations that help them out. So, what I was looking for was how much they raised an amount that fiscal year. So, my understanding, I mean, it's a school year, so that's kind of what I'm looking at and how much whatever entity, whatever body was able to raise in that particular fiscal year. So if there's a way to report that, I think we just got some, it was different. We got different types of feedback in the area where it comes to funding sources. But I think, I appreciate the time that the individuals spent completing these. I think these were useful. I do think there's a few that stand out as probably stronger models that others might want to follow. So, thank you.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I'd like to just sort of echo everything that's been said so far. First of all, and most importantly, that we do think, at least I'll speak for myself, I think that these are all, these are really wonderful programs that are available to our students and because they are so wonderful is the reason why I think we're so concerned by making sure that all of the students on our campus have access to them. Because they provide such interesting and valuable opportunities for the students who are in them. So, and I also want to echo what Mrs. Parker said about wanting to make sure that we see the improvement. That we don't, it doesn't just take the form of, we'll submit a report to sort of placate the board and then nothing, there's no accountability for making it happen. So I want to make sure that that continues. I also want to suggest that, because I agree with what Ms. Lamone said too, about some of these being much more useful formats and others having the information in a way that wasn't quite as clear. I'd kind of like to see us maybe do a little bit like what we did with the single-site plans, where we moved to a little bit more uniformity in terms of how the information was reported to us. And maybe we could just sort of, I don't, I'm trying to think of what word to use, but compile, I guess, the best examples for each part as a model for the schools. Because some of them just said, we have, you know, twenty-one percent non-whites. And then others said, we have, you know, two percent Koreans, we have, you know, Korean-Americans, we have, you know, six percent Japanese-Americans and it was very specific. And so, I found the more specific, the better.
Mr. Heron?
I'll chime in. I agree with everything everybody said. I'll be a little bit more specific in a instructional way or, you know, a good way. I would like Dr. Drati to go back and find, and I'll give you my copy if you want, the January 4th memo from regarding the Green Academy and what their plans were for recruiting. Because when I look at the document from the Green Academy where it just says, open enrollment through counselors, word of mouth, we have a non-inclusive enrollment in our course offerings, I mean, that's dramatically different from what they said they were going to do and what their target population was and the steps they were going to take to give their target population priority. So I think that there's a disconnect between what they told us they were going to do and what they actually put on this paper. Now, maybe they're doing everything they said they would, but this document doesn't show it. The other one that I could use some help, I think, is MAD, the MAD Academy. We've been very clear over the, my term on the board, that we want diversity and their student demographic, three sentences, and their recruiting practices, well, recruiting practice, the demographics just is not anywhere near comparable to the other write-ups. So I think they could, of all the academies, that's the one that's concerned this board over the years more than anything else and it's the least descriptive of what they're doing. So, I just think that it may even be wise to have those two redone, just for your own purposes, not that they have to come back here. But, you know, I think that they're less than complete in my estimation.
Dr. Cash?
Well, I very respectfully hear all the comments and I hope that you all realize that these people did this for the very first time. They had no clue what they were doing. As far as filling out this form, as far as how much detail was going to be requested, what the instructions were, there was no, you know, this, I'll take responsibility for it, but there's no specific direction that you need to break it down in this manner. So it's good to get the feedback and we'll certainly make changes in the reporting process to you next year. But, this was all of their first go-around in responding to those particular issues in this format.
Well, and the MAD Academy did talk at length about the recruiting and hiring someone specifically, so I do want to acknowledge that. Mrs. Parker?
That's essentially what I wanted to say is that I know that a lot of them have given us, actually, and Apple was the same way, they've given us very detailed information, they just didn't include it with this document and...
They may not have felt that they needed to because they had already informed you.
Exactly, yeah. So we, this is definitely a work in progress and I appreciate this first go-around.
I do too. And I would just like to maybe conclude by saying, the onus should not just be on the academies because it's really the district's job to make sure that they succeed and that we give them direction and that we provide to them, students in the pathway coming all the way up through elementary, with the qualifications to succeed. Because one of the problems with the Engineering Academy is that they don't have enough students that are successful in math earlier on and so that's something that really needs to be happening at the elementary level and some of these Lego robotic programs at the junior high can prepare students better for the academies and I think we can do a better job even with art at our junior highs to tee the students up. And so I think that that's something that we need to look to ourselves for and not just say, this is what we want you to do, go do it however you can, but we need to provide them with the students that are going to be, you know, qualified to really take advantage of these programs. Okay, do, anything else about this?
No, but I'll move to approve the Program of Choice Annual Evaluation Reports.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no, opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have now moved on to our conference agenda. And we have a special friend of the school district here, Shereen Catapooch from Fighting Back.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you for a few minutes tonight. Really, my purpose here is just to, thanks, Dave, to give you a report on our partnership and the good programs and services that we were able to deliver in support of students and families in the Santa Barbara Unified School District during this last academic year. So I think you know, the mission of the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse is to provide a safer and healthier community and together we're doing that. And I especially want to thank Dr. Cash, who has been very involved and for his personal commitment to the Fighting Back collaboration. That partnership has been going on for twenty years and we really appreciate your leadership in our executive committee. Okay. So, this is kind of our wheel and we think of it maybe a little bit like you do of your pyramid of interventions. We have universal programs that target all students, selective programs that are designed for groups of students who are at risk, indicated programs for students who are already experimenting with drugs, and then case identification, treatment, and after-care programs. There we go. So what I've compiled here are the individual services, not the group services, but just the individual services that we provided during this school year to students. There were eight hundred and thirty-five individual students served by our YSS on the secondary campuses. They provided almost five thousand services to students. That could be individual therapeutic counseling, it could be mediation, it could be a conference with a teacher or a parent, but eight hundred and thirty-five students. Friday Night Live and Club Live, those are the students that actively participated in the clubs or the leadership groups. That's not everyone who benefited from the activities, but just the weekly or bi-weekly clubs on campus and in the community. Our Reconnecting Youth Program, as you know, serves students daily for a semester at the high school and for the whole year on the junior high school campuses. And a hundred and seventy-eight students benefited from that skill and support group each day. Our Super Program, as you know, is our family intervention and that served a hundred and sixty individuals during this last academic year. Our Mentor Program matches, as you know, adults with at-risk fourth through eighth graders and a hundred and twelve students in the school district benefited from an adult showing up for them every week on campus. Our Care Program is our brand-new elementary grant that we wrote together with you and Family Service Agency. Our four staff served ninety-five students in just this last semester. You know, that started up in January. FSA staff, their counselors, and the new social workers they were able to hire because of this grant, served a hundred and twenty-two individuals for a total of two hundred and seventeen people served. Our Teen Court Program, and this doesn't include, again, groups or classes, this is just the individual students who went through the peer court review, served four hundred and forty-seven. Three hundred and fifty parents in the district went through our parent program this year. And our Daniel Bryant Treatment Program, through our Cannabis Youth Treatment, which is an eight-week short intervention program, or through our Moderate or Intensive Treatment Program, served four hundred and fifty-four youth for almost three thousand students served this year.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Absolutely.
So those are all district students or those students at large in the community?
I asked the staff to tell me the number for the district because we also provide a number of services... a number of services for students at Al Puente, for example, and in the Carpinteria Unified School District, so they ought not be included here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, again, I just wanted to come and thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I did provide you with a short summary of all of our youth and parent-focused programs. None of these are really new to you, except for you, Dr. Drati, maybe. And I've also left a few of these on the back table. So I look forward to working with you again in this next new year, and it really is our privilege to partner with you, to serve students and families in the district.
Well, thank you so much, because I think we think of you as a true partner as well.
Thank you.
And these are really valuable services for our students. Ms. Cordero?
Yes, if we could go back to this number slide?
Sure.
I assume that some of these represent a duplicated headcount, because students might participate in more than one of these programs.
That's right. They could be in Reconnecting Youth and also get referred to the Super Program because of a disciplinary action, for example.
But within each program, would they be, for example, let's just say, YSS?
Unduplicated within program.
That would, this, one student would only, it would be an unduplicated headcount?
That's right.
Okay.
Because those 835 students, when we count the services and not the students, it's almost 5,000 services. So that tells you that each student is seeing a YSS about five times.
Okay, so that represents 835 separate students.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Well, thanks so much. Have a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to the second reading of Board Policy 5131 Conduct and the Board Policy Administrative Regulation as well, and Policy 5144. Dr. Cash?
Yes, thank you. Interestingly, after our last board meeting, we had, I think, Ms. Kiani and Mr. Sumner and myself either, I think separately, had interesting conversations with CSBA and FICMAT, not FICMAT, and what's the service? Now, I'm drawing a blank for their board policies.
CSBA.
Yeah, I know it is, but they have a special name for their service. GAMET, thank you. And the recommendation from them was not to create two separate policies, but to maintain an existing policy and then allow the rules and regulations regarding restorative discipline be just that, rules and regulations just for Santa Barbara Junior High School, which the board policy allows the individual schools to enact. So they would have their own separate rules and regulations. It would not be part of the board policy. It would just be something Santa Barbara Junior High School is doing in response to and in accordance with the power delegated to them by you and your board policy. So that's what they suggested, as opposed to having two separate board policies run simultaneously.
Well, I guess even before this conversation starts, then, can we, is the suggestion that we not approve these .99s? That we maybe have a discussion around them, but...
That kind of simplifies the process a bit, yes. By isolating it, well, one of the recommendations or the request of the board last meeting was to be able to get the two separated. So that was very clearly delineated.
Right.
And that's what the attempt was in rewriting policies and new numbers, that kind of thing. But that sort of takes care of itself if we just designate them as rules and regulations specific to Santa Barbara Junior High, established by Santa Barbara Junior High School and accepted by their staff as their rules and regulations, as permitted in Board Policy 5144.
So they would go through their own process, which kind of informally they've already done by being interested and agreeing to be the pilot school for restorative justice. So that's what CSBA recommended.
And some of the staff, administrative staff from Santa Barbara Junior High sat on the committee that developed these revisions to begin with, and so now it'd be a matter of maybe expanding that a bit to some of the classroom staff, perhaps those that went on the training or back to the visit to Denver could be part of that as well, to look at what is being proposed.
Ms. Lamone?
So, on that note, is what we're looking at tonight going to, since it's now going to be specific to Santa Barbara Junior High, is it going to come back to us as rules and regulations versus a BP or...
It wouldn't need to.
No, it wouldn't come back to you at all.
So it wouldn't come back at all?
Right.
That's correct.
Eventually, as the program, as the philosophy expands throughout the district, then we would look at revising the policy district-wide.
Okay, so for clarification, wait, are we going to move forward with this? Are we looking at this tonight? Are we giving feedback?
Well, we did, there were some additions of language, like the unauthorized videotaping and audiotaping that I think we probably want to go ahead and include.
Right, the recommended revisions were made to this that appear in the new, and you can see what the attempt was, it was submitted before we heard from CSBA about the option of making the rules and regulations, the board policy number option and the title change to sort of delineate between the two policies more. But that wouldn't be necessary if it goes with just the rules and regulations part. But all of the suggested or requested changes from the last policy are included in this updated version here.
Mrs. Parker?
Yeah, because my only suggestion had been going to be that in the exhibit on 5144 and the discipline matrix, that that include that this was restorative justice discipline matrix?
Yes.
Because it's the one, you'd put restorative justice on everything else except for on that one. But I think the CSBA's suggestion that this be currently, my other suggestion is going to be made, somewhere there needs to be a cover sheet that says, "This is for Santa Barbara Junior High." And if we're just going to go that way, that makes perfect sense to me, and we don't need to touch this.
Yeah, I think it, one of the nice things about it, too, is it'll provide some probably needed flexibility to be more agile at the school site, to make changes at their level when they need to make them, as opposed to coming back here. We're going to, part of the process will be a periodic, that Mr. Sumner will do periodic reporting on what's happening, both anecdotally and some data throughout the school year, obviously, related to their implementation of it. So this would avoid them having to come back and kind of nitpick at the changes.
So it would be an organic document that grows
Yes.
as they test, pilot-test it, and it stays there. Ms. Cordero?
Well, I like that idea. I like SPTA's recommendation, and I think it would be helpful if, at the end of the school year, if Santa Barbara Junior High would bring forth whatever their final guidelines are, so that the board could compare those to what we have in front of us now, see what changes were made. And then also, if Santa Barbara Junior High could give an explanation for why would any of the changes were made. And then that would help us know whether that's something that would be appropriate across the district, or whether it was something that might be sort of, you know, specific to the Santa Barbara Junior High culture or community.
Excellent idea, yeah.
Ms. Lamone?
Before I move forward, I just do have a little thing. I think I brought this up at the last time, but BP 5131.99, it does reference therapeutic versus general therapy, skilled-based therapeutic versus regular, so I would just make that change. It's on the bottom of page two of six.
So just absent, or strike the skilled-based portion?
Strike the skilled-based portion, just because everything else refers to just therapeutic.
So, Board, do we want to move forward with any of the small changes that we made on this lettering, the addition of that language, or do we want to just stay with our original board policies, let this be the template for Santa Barbara Junior High, and then wait for that to come back to us?
I would recommend that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would prefer.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, but we literally, this is like the, you know, the ninth-hour info that we got, so the agenda had been published and...
Good, yeah. Okay, what's fast?
I would like to just quickly comment. Board Policy 5131 is going to be coming back to you, the one we now have in place, because there is new, Assembly Bill Nine comes out and is requiring separation of the bullying piece of that into its own policy. So probably at the August meeting, or we're coming to a board meeting near you, we'll bring back that policy for revisions and recommendations at that time.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to our third conference item, which is Discussion of Technology Professional Learning. Dr. Cash?
Great. Dave, can you put this up, the attachment up? As board members are aware, this year, this next, well, it's this school year, we're going to be moving forward with looking at building capacity throughout our schools to really create technology learning environments for our students. I think everyone on the dais and everyone watching and in the audience understands just putting the equipment in a classroom doesn't guarantee much of anything except that the equipment's in the classroom. And it takes a qualified and competent teacher and students who are motivated to learn to really take advantage of the technology that's not only in the classroom, but in their homes and in the community and throughout the school. And so building that lateral capacity means that we need to ensure that not just a few classroom teachers are, have learning environments with technology, but that most every classroom teacher has a technology environment for classroom learning. It may not be appropriate in every classroom, but certainly it would be appropriate in most all classrooms. And to do that, we're going to need to embark on a very comprehensive and in-depth professional learning activity for teachers. We have learned through the years that the idea of bringing everyone into a central location, providing training on equipment that may not be the equipment they actually have back in their classroom, in a room with 30 of their colleagues, has not proven to be the most effective model for getting technology integrated into our instructional programs. What has turned out to be the most effective model is what teachers have done naturally throughout the years, and that is turn to their colleague in the room next door to them, or down the hall, or in the same content area, and say, "I need help. How do you do that? Could you come into my classroom and show me how to use this new iPad I have?" And that's how that change occurs. And so understanding that that's the process by which it's most natural for educators and is producing the deep and lasting results, we're going to, we've created a process to do that across the district. And it starts, as I've explained before, with three technology coaches. It looks like it'll actually be five people, but three full-time positions that will be housed at our high schools, the three comprehensive high schools. They will then work in year one with five technology mentors, each with five mentors. And those will be teachers who already have demonstrated an interest and competence and proficiency in integrating technology. And so their goal will be to, the technology coaches and working with the mentors, on how to teach adults to use technology. Oftentimes, I think we've made a mistake in education, that if you can teach kids, you can teach adults. But those of us that are educators know that there's a big difference between teaching kids and teaching adults. It's a lot easier to teach kids. And so, understanding that, these two, the technology mentors will pick two classroom teachers, either in their content area, in their, somewhere in their school, and they will work individually with those teachers. And these two classroom teachers will not be the, of the technology mentor level of technology. They'll be teachers that are interested in, want to lean forward and learn how to do it, but haven't had the time, or haven't had the opportunity, or the training to really begin implementing it in the classroom. The idea with the technology mentors is that they will truly be mentors. And I think those of us that were in education 20 years ago remember Mentor Teachers, the Mentor Teacher Program, a really great program that never should have been eliminated because it really was effective at changing instruction in the classroom. This will be very similar, where these teachers will go in, they will do model lessons, they will co-teach with these classroom teachers, they will be there to answer questions, and they will be there to ensure that these teachers have an opportunity to begin integrating technology in their instructional programs. And that will be throughout the year. There will be, I'm committed to not having very specific direction, like you're all going to work on, you know, headline or EDU, or you're all going to work on creating spreadsheets or databases, or the real goal is, is to develop the mentor with each of the classroom teachers a plan for the year. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to do three demonstration lessons before the end of the first trimester, if they're an elementary school teacher. We're going to integrate technology, you know, six times throughout the first semester, if I'm a secondary teacher. And then come back and evaluate the effectiveness, answer questions, address the, kind of the technical issues related to that, you know, what happens when my lesson is based on this and, you know, all of a sudden I'm pressing the button and no screen comes on. So, you know, what do we do then? How do we plan for those sorts of contingencies? And these mentor teachers, because they've been doing it for a while, they've all experienced that. They've had that happen to them, where they have this great lesson planned and the technology doesn't work, so what do we do? So they'll be great, they'll be great in mentoring those teachers to kind of alleviate the concern or the fear of having the screen be black, as opposed to be presenting the great video that they've created. What we will do throughout the year is bring forward to you reports from our mentor teachers about the work that they're doing, and I hope to have some real showcase opportunities throughout the year of these classroom teachers coming forth at board meetings and giving you just a quick slice of what they're doing, so that you can see, here's where I started, here's where I am, here's what I've done with whatever it is in relationship to implementing the Common Core. That's all the great fun and instructional stuff that's related to this. I'm going to give you the more dry and reality-based stuff, is that we're going to be assessing kids on the Common Core state standards in one year. Those will be online assessments. In fact, I think, Dr. Drati, we're going to, are we going to, we're going to pilot some?
We're looking into that.
Yeah, so see where we are, what our capability would be. So we've got to get everyone up to speed as quickly as possible in not only feeling comfortable with technology in their classroom, but seeing it as an instructional, an environment for kids to learn. So the great stuff is that this is a natural way in which kids are going to access content and communicate their understanding of it, and the reality is, is this is the way kids are going to get assessed in the future of their understanding of the content. So I'm really looking forward to bringing back to you the reports as this moves forwards with very specific examples of how it's happening in our schools. So, questions?
Mrs. Parker?
Thank you, Dr. Cash. There is such tremendous variability in our staff's technology capacity right now. You know, you're talking about the screen being black. As someone whose husband and whose friends have volunteered in classrooms to be some tech support, you know, the number of times it's because the teacher has not plugged the device in, I mean, it really does happen pretty regularly. There's a huge learning curve for a lot of our staff. So I appreciate this being put into place. This sounds great. One question that I have is that you're talking about flexibility, essentially, in terms of not prescribing what is going to be discussed or talked or taught. We, the FICMAT has completed their technology report, and I'm sure that that's going to be released on the district website at some point.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. But they talk in their report about professional development for teachers around technology. And their example was the Google Docs situation. You talked about EDU, for example. I mean, at some point, there are certain skills that our teachers have to have.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering how it would be addressed, that a principal says, "Okay, I've got 25 staff, you know, certificated staff on my site. They must know how to use EDU. They must know how to use Google Docs. I need to be sure that they have that training over the next 12 months, 24 months." How is that plan going to fit in with this?
Hand in glove. The undefined nature of it is just next year. It's going to take us a year to see, okay, where are the real big, where's the floor? And if it literally is starting with plugging in the machinery, then that will have to be addressed comprehensively throughout the district, wherever we are. But fundamentally, even those issues, I think, are going to be best addressed at the teacher-to-teacher level. And so building the capacity across the school is really going to be the only way that we're going to be able to get to those fundamental issues, like some agreement, okay, everyone's going to use Google Docs or Dropbox, or everything's going to be stored in the cloud, kids are all going to have Gmail accounts. Whatever those particular issues, whatever we as an organization decide are going to be, the way that that will be implemented... be, the way that that will be implemented with fidelity and deeply will be in the, I believe, in the teacher-to-teacher realm, where I, as a teacher, can go, you know, you know, Ms. Deacon, our principal, she gave us that two-hour training on Google Docs, and I was lost after the first five minutes. And, and I can go to you and say, "Kate, you know, I know you know how to do it, can you come into my classroom and show me how to do it?" I, I just know that, that's, that eventually is gonna be the most effective way in which we're gonna get it done, because I'm more comfortable admitting my weakness to you as my colleague than I am in saying it in front of all of my peers in a staff meeting. So, I, I, I know that there, there will be issues like that. As far as the FICMAT report is concerned, it really does create a really nice roadmap for us in moving forward in many areas in technology, and in particular, leadership in technology, what the report clearly points to that we need. And I'm certain that issues like, what are we gonna do in relationship to Google Docs? What are we gonna do in relationship to plugging in computers? What kind of basic training are we gonna require? Will all be addressed as we move forward. We, we need to get to the point where those aren't questions anymore.
Mrs. Cordero. Well, Dr. Cash, you, you touched on what my question was gonna be, and actually I have two questions, very separate issues. But the first one was gonna be whether, when you said it, it's not gonna be prescribed, and there's gonna be a fair amount of flexibility in terms of what the mentors and the classroom teachers will focus on. I was wondering, is there, will there be any requirements, or recommendations, or expectations for them, for them to focus more specifically on pedagogical issues and delivering instruction, you know, through more tech, technological approaches that might have, you know, more of a multimodality approach to it, or something? Or will there be more emphasis on gaining expertise in programs that might be useful administratively for the, for the teacher and for the, for the school? And so, I'm, I'm interpreting your, and the comments you just made to suggest that it might be a combination of both, and that the mentor and the teacher would sort of decide.
Yes.
Although, it does, I do understand Ms. Parker's concern that at some point, the, the campus needs for the teachers to be able to use the same administrative structures. So, I can understand that, but as a classroom teacher, I'm thinking, if, you know, if I were, if me, if I was meeting, or when I have met with mentors, it's, it's always about, what am I gonna deliver in my classroom? What am I gonna use with my students? So, I'm hoping that there's, is gonna remain that flexibility for this, teachers and the mentors to focus on both.
Yeah. We, we wanna do is take advantage of the strengths of the mentors and the needs of the classroom teachers. So, that's the rationale for not being prescriptive. Everyone's gonna do this. The idea really is, because it's the first year we're gonna be doing it, we wanna get people excited about doing it, and very importantly, experiencing success in doing it. And as a classroom teacher, if I'm gonna get help from a mentor, I want my need addressed. I'm really interested, I've heard about these really great videos I could show on my US History class, how could I do that and still engage in a group discussion? How could I use my iPad as a, as a document camera and, you know, show how I'm gonna correct this five paragraph essay that the students have turned in about this topic? I mean, that's what I, I'm gonna wanna know. But maybe I might be a classroom teacher that has kind of an understanding about how to do that, and I'm willing to do that on my own, but I'd really like to know, how can I communicate better with parents? Is there a translation tool that I could use? Because, you know, I'm finding that twenty-five percent of my parents are monolingual Spanish, but they still have access to the internet. So, they're communicating with me, but I wanna put it in their native language, so how can I, is there a tool I could use to do that? So, that kind of flexibility, I think, is gonna be important, so that when teachers are having this experience next year, they're feeling positive that it's, this has been great for me, it's helped me in these ways.
Great. The, the other question that I had is a really straightforward, just clarification question, and that is, on this graph, the year two, are the mentors, the same mentors as year one?
They could be.
Okay. So, the classroom teachers will be new teachers, different teachers, but the mentors might be the same people as year one. In year two, is there any expectation that the classroom teachers from year one, who got the benefit of that mentoring, will themselves mentor anyone?
Yes. There, there won't be any formal expectation, but the belief is, that's exact, well, as a classroom teacher, that's exactly what will happen.
Okay.
It'll be, you know, "Hey, Cash, you had Deacon with you all last year, what did you guys learn? Could you show me what you learned?" Sure. Hey, come on over, let me show you what I learned how to do.
Mr. Heron.
Could you describe the technology coach and that person's relationship to the, in that case, five mentors?
Will act as a facilitator, kind of the in-house expert of both software, hardware, online, offline resources, kind of the go-to person for, if the mentor comes forward and said, you know, "The two classroom teachers I'm working with are both, one's a third grader, one's a fifth grader, one's a third grade teacher, one's a fifth grade teacher." What, where can I find resources for third grade and fifth grade? What's the best place to look for that? They're really interested in, fill in the blank, where would I go? So, these are people who have already, for years, demonstrated act, their understanding of and access to a wide variety of resources. They're considered the quote, "go-to" people on their campuses for those sorts of questions already.
Obviously, there's a cost, cost of this program. Do we have any ballpark number of what that cost might be? Or, I presume that technology coach and the mentors will be a stipend kind of thing?
Technology coaches, all, that it's paid for through Title II funds, which is our professional development allocation from the federal government. It's a really great use of those resources.
Ms. Limon.
I appreciate the, the flexibility that this program is gonna have, but I also have a question. How are we gonna measure effectiveness? Because if, in a year from now, we've allowed enough flexibility, but some folks are still not ready to take on what we might expect with the Common Core assessment, I mean, what do we do? How do we measure whether this is going to work? And what are we looking for?
Two years from now, I'll be able to answer that question.
So, in the meantime, it's just a year of?
It's, it's, the, the reality is, is that we've, we have not invested in this resource. And because we haven't, it is, it would be, I believe, dangerous to be prescriptive and say, "Everyone must do the following."
Well, I'm not thinking about must, but what, what are the things we want folks to get out of in the next year? Like, what do we want them to extract from this type of mentorship? Because I could see that if you do have one-on-one time with a mentor, I mean, I feel comfortable with technology, but there's a whole lot of questions that I could be asking that might not have to do with what Ms. Cordera brought out, brought up, which was, you know, incorporating it into pedagogy, or the classroom, or even just assessment alone. So, I do worry a little bit that if we don't have some concrete outcomes that we're expecting, and I don't want them to be prescriptive, as this is the, how you have to spend twenty minutes, or whatever it is, but I also wanna make sure that it's not a, a pure question of, "Okay, my iPad's sticking together, hold on," and we don't get past some of the things that could take a little bit more time to talk about.
Well, the expectation is, is that we, by the end of this, we will have at least throughout the district about fifteen to twenty-five classroom teachers that are integrating technology in their classroom. And they will demonstrate that, as I said, by bring, I'll either provide it for you in writing, or we'll have some showcase lessons with them bringing that forward. That will be, that's the expectation a year from now. The very specific expectation, I will have a better grasp of that after we've actually engaged in this process for a year, so that we know what can we actually expect from someone who starts at ground zero, or someone who starts at fifty percent, or someone who's like you. But I, what I don't wanna say is that every teacher's gonna do one integrated lesson per quarter, and that's the expectation, because I, I think that's baseline. I, I don't wanna limit that and, and say that that's sufficient for, for, for each one of the classroom teachers.
Well, I look forward to seeing what we come up with after a year.
My question had to do, first of all, I, I really like the flow here, and I, I get it, and it makes a lot of sense, but it leaves me wondering if those people who are the least comfortable will be the last, and therefore fall, fall farther behind, because there may be people who are so uncomfortable that they're afraid to ask. And so, it may be up to a principal to seek those people out and say, "How would you like to be mentored next?" Or something like that, because I, I can see all the volunteers are people who are genuinely engaged and have already thought about ways they can use it, but it's those other folks that we're gonna need to bring up to speed.
I anticipate that this is very much the minimum that will occur. Six months ago, I thought we would have maybe, and you heard me say this, six to eight classrooms that might look at having iPads in their classroom with an Apple TV. I thought, well, if we could have six or eight teachers, I would be interested in trying that out, that'd be a really great thing to have happen during our second semester. Two hundred? I anticipate something, maybe not on that scale, but something like that is gonna happen here. Because as a classroom teacher, when I'm hearing that the person next door to me is, is engaging their students in a way that, that is, that kids are talking about, that's happening throughout the school, that I'm gonna wanna be part of that. That's, feel pretty confident about that. I believe most all of our teachers are learners, and are, once they hear about what's happening, are gonna wanna be part of that.
That's good. And I know you mentioned the mentorship model's been around for a long time, it has the coaching as well, and I, I know that there are modules out there that maybe the technology coach can spend some time with and then be able to distribute to, to folks, so if they need kind of a plug-in, you know, for the, for a classroom lesson.
Oh, I'm gonna bet-
That there'll be ready-made stuff already out there.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna bet we have web, I mean, that, two of the mentors already have web pages up where they have demonstration lesson plans for various content. I, I'm fairly confident that that's gonna spread in a way that I can't define because of my, my limited experience and knowledge in the area of technology. It'll be in ways that will be, to me, undefinable at this point.
Our student teachers have actually been mentoring some of our teachers as well, because we're not, not surprising, they're really up to speed. Mrs. Cordero.
Well, you just made me think of possibly partnering, or, or creating some sort of partnership with the university and Santa Barbara City College, and perhaps, I don't know, what, if Antioch, or Westmont, or other institutions would have it too. But I know, for example, at Santa Barbara City College, that we have a faculty resource center that provides tutor, that has online tutorials for a variety of technologic, technology needs. And some of them are bringing it into your classroom and using it for various kinds of presentations, or approaches. And so, I was one, I was thinking, I'm sure UCSB must have something similar, and maybe even, you know, farther colleges as well, to engage, have some partnerships where some of our classroom teachers might be able to access things that have already been created for classroom teachers, so that they can go, once they've kind of mastered some of the mechanics of it, can search out more on their own, and possibly wouldn't, would then not rely so much on the mentor to provide that.
Well, the goal is to flatten out the capacity, to build it across the system and not have it reside in just a, a few specialists-
Right.
-in the district, because we're never gonna have the resources to be able to, to centralize that function and support everyone in the district. It's gotta be flattened out so that that, that capacity is found throughout the school sites, both in a, remember to plug in the computer level, and here's the way that I'm using a one-to-one iPad program, or whatever device we were gonna use in my class.
Mrs. Parker?
I would just imagine that the county education office actually probably has lots of resources on that, that I think, that, that are there, and teachers just need to be referred to it constantly, they're, especially ones that are not comfortable. So, that, I, I really appreciated you bringing that up, Mrs. Deacon, because you're so right, that probably the least comfortable teachers are the ones that will be less likely to come forward and ask for this, so, thank you.
Mr. Heron.
I'll just add, Mrs. Parker, SPCEO has a portal that has lesson plans, world books, you name it, they have it. But they also do something once a year, that's just on, I mean, they have a technology showcase.
Right.
And you may wanna think about having a technology showcase just for our classroom teachers under this program, and then pick, have the top ten make a presentation to the whole, whole teacher cadre of how they're using, how these classroom teachers are using what they learned-
That's a great idea.
-from their mentors, and have our own technology showcase.
Yep, that's a great idea.
It's always well-attended, and it's fun to watch teachers actually use the, the portal, or whatever they use, and, and how successful they are. So, it'd be fun to have a technology showcase, get some prizes, and encourage the classroom teachers to, and that may be part of the outcome after a year, is they're gonna showcase what they do.
That's where some of the best ideas for teachers come from, from other teachers. Okay, is there anything you wanted to add, or do you think that's-
No, thank you.
-pretty much it?
For all the input.
It's a good discussion, and it's something I think we're all really excited about watching it unfold. We do not need to return to any consent agenda items at this point, so, coming events-
Excuse me, President Deacon?
Yes.
I need to apologize to the board, because under item G-18 on the consent agenda, I forgot to tell you who the low-responsive bidder was, and we should have that for the record.
Why don't you-
Go ahead and tell us.
The Western Group.
Okay. All right, that's on the record. Thank you, Mr. Heron. All right, coming events, we do have a special board meeting on July 30th. Is that at nine o'clock? I can't remember when, when it starts. Well, we'll, we'll find out for sure, and it's off-site, I think.
I think-
Nine AM.
Okay, all right.
We wanna respect everyone's opportunity to get ready.
That's right, that's right. And it'll be a workshop on board protocols, kind of taking up where we left off a year ago.
Hello, Korea, Jeff.
Okay, great. All right, future agenda items. Ms. Limon?
I think it was almost a year ago, the board had a discussion about the Lynda Mood Bell training, and there was some, I think, funds allocated to it. And so, I would love to see kind of an outcome report on how that went, if it was effective, if, what folks thought of it, or if it needs some tweaking.
That's coming your way.
Thank you. Lynda, Lynda Mood Bell-
Yes.
-training.
We did hear some good information about that in some of the special education parent advisory committees, but it would be nice for the whole board to get a formal report, I agree. Mr. Heron.
I know we just received the FICMAT report, and it's great reading, you know?
The technology-
I presume at some point, we'll have feedback on that report, and an action plan of some nature, as to what's gonna be done to correct the things outlined in that report.
Today was the first round of interviews facilitated by Dr. Christensen for our new Director of Technology, so I would hope that soon I'll be presenting that candidate to the board for approval, and that certainly would be the number one task of that person.
I, I noticed in there, there's a section on our relationship with the QSS program.
Yes.
And I know tonight, we approved a, a new contract for one year, but it might behoove staff to look at the FICMAT report and compare it to that contract, to see if there might be some tweaking to it that might be appropriate.
There's a good likelihood we'll be talking about QSS in the future.
And I believe, I don't have the date, but early in August, I believe, there is going to be a translating workshop put on by Just Communities, that our district will be working with. Are you, nope, nobody's aware?
I don't, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Well, I believe that it's coming up.
Maybe we can share that, I, I think, maybe some people got information about it, so maybe we can share that with the district, because it seems like a-
Yes.
-good training that's worth having.
Oh, that's, I, I'm remembering that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I think you got involved on that.
Right. Okay. Good. Thank you for mentioning that. Okay. Well, if there are no other future agenda items, our next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, August the 14th. And with that, we are-